Are you ready to start?
I am.
Go ahead.
As a motion by councillors Hollingsworth and Gardie, we felt that the minutes of regular council meeting of May 25, 2020 be approved.
All in favor? Motion is carried.
And under agenda item three, councillor Shoemaker has declared a conflict with respect to the Northern Avenue improvements under consent and with respect to the associated bylaw 2020-123 as the contractor is a client of the law firm.
Thank you councillor Shoemaker. Does anybody else have any conflicts to declare? I see none. We can move on.
Under agenda item five, agenda item 5.1, June is Parks and Recreation Month.
Okay, so I have a proclamation here to recognize Parks and Recreation Month, so I will read that. "In Sioux State Marine, we are fortunate to have a variety of recreational and park systems providing countless recreational opportunities for residents and visitors from around the world. Whereas recreation enhances quality of life, balanced living and lifelong learning helps people live happier and longer, develops skills and positive self-image in children and youth, develops creativity and builds healthy bodies and positive lifestyles. Whereas recreational participation builds family unity and social capital, strengthens volunteering community development, enhances social interaction, creates community pride and vitality and promotes sensitivity and understanding to cultural diversity. Whereas parks, open space and trails provide active and passive outdoor recreation, opportunities help maintain clean air and water and promote stewardship of the natural environment. Whereas the benefits provided by recreational programs, facilities, service, parks and open space reduce healthcare and social service costs, service to boost the economy, enhance property values, tracking business and increase tourism. Whereas Ontario has designated June as Recreation and Parks Month and annually recognizes and celebrates the benefits derived each year from quality public and private recreation and parks, resources at the local, regional and provincial levels. Now therefore, I, Christian Provinzano, as Mayor of the City of Sioux State Marine, do hereby proclaim the month of June as Recreation and Parks." Councillor, that brings us 5.2, and it, on your agenda, just indicates Black Lives Matter, and I just put that there as a placeholder. We don't have a presentation. What we have is, I have a proclamation that I'm going to read, but before I do, I just wanted to recognize a few people and some, some things that I think we need to recognize, and I think our community needs to see us recognized. The first thing I want to recognize is, I had a number of people reach out to me last week from the community who wanted to organize demonstrations or protests to express solidarity with Black Lives Matter and to protest against anti-racism and anti-black racism. And I want to thank all those people for reaching out to me and the city and asking how to do things properly. And I think it really speaks to the best in our community. And you saw a significant demonstration yesterday, and that came as a result of the organizers working really hard with Sioux State Marine Police Services and with Agoma Public Health to make sure that they undertook a demonstration that kept people safe and was peaceful. And I think the demonstration really was a, was a tremendously strong demonstration and spoke to the desire in our community to say something about the racism and the black racism that we're currently seeing, particularly in the US. I participated yesterday in the motorcade, and I was really heartened by the number of cars that were in it, but also by all the Siouxites that were standing on the street expressing their support for the demonstration. I want to recognize the Agoma University Student Union and its leadership and how capably they work to keep it safe and to keep it respectful and to work with Sioux State Marine Police Services and Agoma Public Health. I want to really recognize Acano and its leadership. I had a call on Friday with the executive of Acano, and it was a difficult call. It was difficult to listen to how people were feeling, and they invited me to participate in a two-hour session they had on Saturday. They hosted virtually to have a listening and healing session, and I was able to participate in one of the two hours. It was from 1:00 to 3:00 on Saturday. That was able to listen from 1:00 till 2:00, and that was difficult to listen to also. Before I read the proclamation, I think it's important to recognize that there are a lot of people in our community that have much different experience than I have, a much different experience than many of you have. And I listened to a number of those experiences and maybe reflect on what I've done since I've been the mayor of the community. And I want to take responsibility for myself here because I don't think I've done enough. And I don't think I've accomplished enough over the last five years to help make Sioux State Marine the place that we all want it to be. And I think there's been some failings on my part, and I have fallen short. And in listening to the, the experience people are having, I, in reflecting on it, I have to take responsibility for myself if I'm going to ask other people in our community to step up and examine their own actions. When you see what's happening in the United States, it might be easy to, to leave it there, but that would be a mistake. It's certainly happening to a more visible and significant degree there, and we saw that with the killing of Breonna Taylor, 26-year-old black woman who was killed in the United States, and Ahmaud Arbery, a 25-year-old black man who was killed in the United States, and most recently George Floyd, who was killed. And although we see those terrible and horrific and explicit acts, there's more insidious racism that happens just in day-to-day lives, and it might not come from a malicious place. It might just be institutional. It could be a result of internal biases that some of us don't even know that we have. And in the listening session that I participated in, I heard a lot about how people feel when they're out and about and what they experience. But in the session I had with Acano on Friday, one of the people who I respect very much and is a leader in her own right had pointed out to me a post I had made earlier in the year, and it was celebrating a specific day. And I, in celebrating that day, I posted a picture, and everybody in the picture was white. And it hurt the person to see that because the person, you know, knows me as the leader of the community and has some, I guess, respect for the effort I make and likes me. And it, I really reflected on those comments. And I realized that when I made that post, it didn't even occur to me that everybody in the post was white. So I'm going to circle back to what I said at the beginning of this. I by no means consider myself to be racist, but I could obviously do a better job in being sensitive to the realities than a number of people in our community live with. In my very first year as mayor, I met with a gentleman named Dave Mornecks who many of you know. And Dave made a point to me that he said, "One of the things that you have to do if you want to build a welcoming community," because that was the question I had asked him, "was people who are in the community have to see themselves in the community, and they have to see themselves in the leadership of the community. They have to see themselves on boards and committees, and they have to see themselves in the workplace." And I thought that was a really good point, and I don't think that we've done enough to make that a reality here in Sioux State Marine. So I want to recognize the tremendous leadership we have here in Acano and with Agoma University Student Union. I want to thank Agoma University itself for their leadership. And I want to challenge all of us to do more and to examine our own beliefs and our own conduct and our own activities so that each of us can create and work harder to create a welcoming community. We've seen a lot of statements over the last number of weeks, but it's pretty clear now that statements aren't enough, that we need to see action. And although what's happening here isn't happening to the same degree as it's in the United States, we can do better. And we want to build a community where, where people across our community, no matter their race, see themselves in the community and see themselves in the leadership of the community and see an opportunity to contribute to our community. And I want to make the commitment that I'll reexamine my own decisions on a going-forward basis to make sure I'm making every effort I can when I can to do that. So in light of the, the desire in our community to, to, to make a statement, and the statement that was made yesterday by hundreds of people in our community, and the activities going on across North America, and in respect of the leadership in our community and our black community, I drafted this present, this proclamation I'll read on behalf of us and for our community. Whereas George Floyd was killed by a police officer on May 25, 2020, Minneapolis, Minnesota, in the presence of three additional police officers. Whereas since George Floyd's, George Floyd's death, there have been protests and demonstrations across the United States and in Canada in support of Black Lives Matter and standing against police brutality, anti-black racism and the killing of black people. Whereas racism and anti-black racism is not limited to the United States, racism and anti-black racism exists here, in Canada and in our own community of Sioux State Marine. And whereas racism is not limited to explicitly hateful, discriminatory or prejudiced comments and actions, racism can exist in institutional and systemic policies and practices. And whereas all people are created equally and all people have the right to be treated equally in accord with our prescriptive law and the principles of natural justice. Whereas in order to create a free and just society, each of us have a responsibility to not only stand against racism, but to actively encourage equality through the way we treat one another and by challenging the systems and practices that permit or support racism. Now therefore, I, Christian Provinzano, as Mayor of the City of Sioux State Marine, do hereby explicitly acknowledge that racism and anti-black racism exists in Sioux State Marine and that racism hurts the people it is directed towards and that weakens our larger community. I hereby call on and ask all of the residents of our community to examine our own attitudes, perspectives and conduct to determine where and how we can improve and contribute to the fight against racism and anti-black racism so that all members of our community feel welcome, respected, included and safe, and so that we can build a stronger community that is modeled to others. Thank you. Ma'am clerk, I think we can move on to the consent agenda.
Motion by councillor Hollingsworth and Gardie, we felt that all items listed under date June 8, 2020, agenda item six, consent agenda, be approved.
Okay, councillor, I had councillor Gardie contact me, and he wanted to pull a matter from consent. So before we get too far down the road, I'll just pull that so no one has to speak to it. The matter he wanted to pull from consent was the eliminations of single-source plastic 6.7, so that's going to be pulled from consent. Are there any other matters to pull from consent? Seeing none, just for fun, I'll start in the middle today, so we'll start with Ward Three, councillor Hillsinger. Did you have any matters in the consent agenda?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one question on 6.6. And my question is around the schedule for transition, waiting a year from 2022 to 2023. Is there an opportunity, and I guess this would be to Ms. Hamilton Beach, is there an opportunity to shorten that timeline or is not enough known in terms of what the province will prescribe, et cetera? I just, I just wondered what those opportunities might be.
Ms. Hamilton Beach, if you can please answer that.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Hillsinger. I think what the, the province is trying to do through the leadership of the MOE is to have equally balanced years of transition, and I think they are trying to have that be as per the municipality's request. I would suggest that if we do want to be in the queue earlier in that first year, we can certainly do our best to do that, but we may not have our wish as we ask. It might be more so the balancing act by other factors such as tonnage across the province and/or regions. So we thought this was best given the year extension, but by all means, it can be adjusted.
Okay, so we know that that is an option, correct? As in, as in, and perhaps Mr. Mayor or Mr. CAO. So if we accept this report as recommended, does that mean that we cannot ever change the 2023, or we can just do it today knowing that there could be options further down the road to speed up that timeline?
Well, let the CAO answer that. Mr. CAO?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Hillsinger. I will put that back to Ms. Hamilton Beach. I'm not sure if, because we're doing it as a resolution, while it is a request, I'm not sure we can speed it up after we put it in, but I'll defer to her comment.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Hillsinger. So this is an expression of our intent and the best date we see fit for the municipality. This would be fed to AMO, who is then reporting to the MOE. So if there, we want to perhaps add a clause suggesting that as of, you know, the beginning of the year, January 1st, we would work with the MOE, we can so do. Take that step.
Okay, okay. Um, that's, that's, that's good to know. I think anything that we can do to be kinder and nicer to our environment, we should be joining wholeheartedly. That's the only thing I have a question on, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else on 6.6? So we're moving on from 6.6, and you had nothing else in the consent agenda than councillor Hillsinger? Okay, so we'll go to councillor Shoemaker then.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 6.3, disabling of advanced left turn signals during hours, I think, to Mr. Rumiel, if he's on the line. He is, okay, perfect. Mr. Rumiel, the, the request was to see if we could do this.
Councillor Shoemaker, just stop, please. Your audio is really, really off. So, so does everybody else hearing what I was hearing, or did everybody else hear councillor Shoemaker well? So your audio is off, so can you start again?
I can, let me see.
You're good now, you're good now.
So I was asking Mr. Rumiel if, if the technology is implemented that is supposed to fix these advanced arrow delays, and, you know, we don't see the result that we were anticipating, can we then manually override them and turn them off in off-peak hours?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Shoemaker, yes. You can, you can manually input timing plans into intersection controller at any time.
Okay, so even with the new technology, we'll be able to override it?
I believe you can. I would have to check with our operations guys to say 100%, but I'm pretty sure you can, you can input manually timing plans into these cabinets.
Okay, and we're getting, what, 25 intersections where this technology is going to be implemented?
Mr. Mayor, to councillor Shoemaker, yes. Initially, there's 25 intersections that, right now, there's 25 intersections that Public Works is monitoring. And the city can install remotely monitor up to 25 intersections, yes, 25.
Okay, so would it be fair to say that most of the ones where the equipment will be installed to monitor remotely will be the busier ones which have the advanced signals?
Through the mayor, to councillor Shoemaker, yes, I would say the major arteries would be the ones we would target.
Okay, and will this assist in other intersection improvements like the synchronization of lights to the greatest degree possible for traffic going in one direction or the other?
Mr. Mayor, to councillor Shoemaker, it, this, this will monitor pedestrian vehicle delays, left turn delays at every intersection and over a 24-hour period. My understanding is that it recalibrates to, to, to optimize those or minimize those delays in all directions for pedestrians and vehicles.
Okay, perfect. Then does it, does it keep, you know, a database of, of, of information, like if there's a, you know, a concert one night downtown or something of that nature? Will the next day, the lights be all wacky because it's recalibrated for the traffic that was there for the concert, or does it, does it do it on an average?
Mr. Mayor, to councillor Shoemaker, I'd have to defer that question to traffic operations people or check back with, with them and report back to you.
Okay, could I have you do that?
Yeah, we'll make sure.
Perfect, thank you. That's all on this matter, you're, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else in 6.3, councillor Bruny? And then councillor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question to Carl. Carl, presently, when we call in to say the signal light's not working, do they do it manually on-site or is this, or is it controlled from, say, Public Works office? Do you know?
Through Mr. Mayor, to councillor Bruny, we're getting into the operations side of things. I believe right now we go out and, and would manually check and get into the cabinet manually and reprogram it. I can possibly, Ms. Hamilton Beach might, might know more.
Well, that's fine.
Okay, councillor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Rumiel, I have a question about this. So if I'm understanding the report correctly, we're going to have this software installed on 25 of 77 signalized intersections in the city, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, to councillor Scott, yes.
Is there a plan or can we expand on that? Is it provided, you know, there were no budgetary restraints or anything along those lines? Could we then link up another 25, or is this software capped at 25?
Mr. Mayor, to councillor Scott, I, again, I cannot say 100% for sure. I would think we could purchase, purchase more, say, licenses or, so to speak, but I'm not sure. I'm going to have to check back to see how, how this could be expanded and report back to you.
Yeah, absolutely. If you could, if you could do that and include me on whatever communication with councillor Shoemaker as well, I'm interested in that. Also, so I guess the next question then is, it kind of touches on what councillor Shoemaker is asking, but I don't know if you know the exact, of the 37 signalized intersections that have advanced left turns, you know how many are going to be part of that 25 that sent tracks, where that will have sent tracks installed?
Mr. Mayor, to councillor Scott, I, I'm unsure of which intersections are getting monitored, but the majority of our main intersections on major arteries, our multi-lane roads, have advanced left turns, so pretty certain that the majority, if not all, of those 25 would be dealing with, with intersections with left turning phases.
Okay, great. Okay, that, that was all the questions that I have, but I am looking forward to, to the report back on the possibility of expanding beyond the 25 and what it would take to have those linked up. I think this is great software. I think it's a good direction ahead. I think that software and artificial intelligence are something that we should, we should lean on. So, thank you.
Anybody else in 6.3? See none? Councillor Shoemaker, do you have anything else?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is the COVID-19 patio report.
Okay, so that is 6.9. Go ahead, councillor Shoemaker.
Thank you. I, this is probably a question more so to the CAO than Mr. McConnell, but Mr. CAO, I'd asked earlier this week, is there anything the municipality can do to assist with the extension of the liquor license beyond the interior of these restaurants if they're expanding to patios that, that are not otherwise covered by their liquor license?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Shoemaker. When you initially posed the question, there wasn't really much the municipality could do, given the way the legislation was currently worded. However, we did receive word this morning that the province has amended the legislation because they realize the same problems you were identifying as needing to be addressed. So we are just looking at that now, but it appears the amendments to the legislation will make it much easier for these establishments to extend their license out to the patio parts, and we will, if there is a role for the municipality, we will certainly be doing our part to assist that.
Okay, perfect. And we heard today, obviously, that patio dining will be allowed starting Friday in our district anyways. Can people reach out to?
Just hold on. Your, your audio went, went really staticky again. Maybe it's when you lean back, I'm not quite sure. So you give it a shot again? Nope, nope, you're not at all. We can't hear you at all now. One more shot?
No?
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you now. Go ahead.
So the question was if, if places are going to be allowed to open for patio dining on Friday, can restaurateurs reach out to the city as of tomorrow to get the ball rolling on this process?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Shoemaker. The only thing I would caution on the entirety of the announcement from the province today is we still haven't seen the actual wording on a lot of the amendments that we're hopeful to see either tonight or tomorrow morning. We need a bit of time to wade through those to ensure we know what all we need to assess, but I would think certainly by Wednesday, businesses could start reaching out to us and sort through the issues.
Okay, thanks. And who do they call if, if they're reaching out about these patio issues?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Shoemaker. They should use just the usual administrative pathway for dealing with patios, and that is through the planning division.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else in 6.9? Councillor Scott? I have councillor Dufour and councillor Bezal on the list.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. McConnell. I did reach out to you earlier with this question, but to make sure that everyone gets the benefit of the answer as well as the public. It's mentioned in the report that seasonal patios may occupy 25% of the total required parking spaces in any yard that is not about a residentially zoned lot. So I asked you earlier for a little bit of context, if, if you could potentially give that to the rest of council and the public, just about the reason behind that and if any modifications could be made for areas that have a larger parking lot in between themselves and the abiding residential zone.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Scott, yes. The rationale for that, the reason to not put outdoor patios next to residential, residentially zoned areas, is that we have had problems in the past with loud noise going on late at the night. I mean, those bars do open until 2:00 in the morning, and we've had problems with music and bands, not so much bands, but just music and people talking loudly at night. So when we did that part of the zoning bylaw, we said, "You can have an outdoor patio in any yard that doesn't abut a residential lot." In other words, and there was one particular example that councillor Scott was concerned about today, but I explained, "It doesn't mean that you can't have an outdoor patio on your property, it means put it on the side away from the residence." So, you know, the side perhaps between the building and the street would work, as it did in the particular case we were discussing. So the easiest thing for people to do is, potential patio operators, as Mr. White said, could either contact myself or Steve Turkle. We'll meet on-site with them and we'll sort this out.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, so we have councillor Dufour next, and councillor Lisa Bezal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question, I believe, is for the CAO or for Mr. McConnell. In the report, it says that obviously all new patio approvals will have to be designed to meet the two-meter physical distancing recommendation. It says all this will be done at no cost to the business. Now, there, are we talking about design approvals, or does the city have other services that we're able to offer to businesses as they're looking to figure out how to redo these patios? Or does the city have other services that we're able to offer to businesses as they're looking to figure out how to redo these patios?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor to Counselor Dufour. I'll let Mr. McConnell answer this, although I would just note that, uh, with all of these things that are coming down from the province, there will be, um, advice, uh, and guidelines that we continue to work with and to evolve. Um, and, uh, where the city is required to give approvals, we will be doing so, but there may be times where we are recommending a business, uh, deal with Algoa Public Health or another entity to receive specific, uh, guidance.
Okay.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor to Counselor Dufour. Uh, that section refers to where we have existing patio licenses with people. Uh, they've paid a fee, uh, and they have an agreement for that sidewalk patio with the with the city in effect already. So what we're referring to is we will redo that agreement, add no charge to them. That's the add no charge to the business part. So there will not be an additional fee. They've paid for a fee in previous years. We'll redo the agreement to make it consistent with current provincial guidelines, and that will be done at no charge to the business.
Okay, thanks. Um, I, uh, my other question was, uh, will these designs be flexible for the duration of the season? Um, so thinking here of businesses that may be, uh, reasonably uncertain of what demand will be for their patios. Um, are we going to be flexible and open ended as a staff where, you know, if demand does increase and folks want to increase the size of the capacity of their patios, um, of course, still, uh, conforming with health regulations, will we be flexible throughout the patio season with some of these designs?
Uh, again, Mr. Mayor, through you to Counselor Dufour. Uh, yes, we will. I think there's been some confusion because some municipalities limit the the amount of seating that you can have in an outdoor patio to a percentage of the indoor seating. We do not do that here. So if circumstances dictate that perhaps a patio needs to move to another location because it's more convenient, or they want to expand it, or they want to make it smaller. Uh, you know, we can certainly deal with that quite quickly. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Bezzell Allen. Madison, if we can have Counselor Bezzell Allen mute, please.
She has to unmute.
Oh, so Lisa, I think you have to unmute. There you go. We can't, Lisa, we can't hear you. I can't hear you at any rate. Yeah, so no one else can hear you. So can you? Can you speak again? Lisa, can you give it another shot? Just talk, see if we can hear you now? No.
What does she need to do? It may just be her microphone on her.
Yeah, yeah, she's. Microphone, her microphone might not be on. So I'll let you, I'll have you look at that, uh, Lisa. Does anybody else want to speak to six point nine? Okay, Lisa, when your microphone's on, we'll come back to you on this. Uh, Counselor Shoemaker, do you have any other matters on consent? No, Counselor Shoemaker doesn't. I'll go to Ward four. Counselor Bruni, do you have any matters in the consent agenda? So one second, Counselor Bruni, you haven't been unmuted. So, yeah, let let Madison unmute you there and then we, yeah, go ahead, Counselor Bruni.
Yeah, just on six point seven and I'll wait for that. That's the one that Mr. Gardi has pulled.
Yeah, Counselor Nero, do you have any matters in the consent agenda? Wait, wait for your mute there. Madison's got to get quicker on the, um, unmuting here.
Counselor Nero has to confirm.
Counselor Nero, do you? Can you unmute yourself there? There you go.
There.
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, so you have nothing on consent, so we'll go to Ward five. Uh, Counselor Scott, do you have anything on consent?
Um, no, nothing that's still there. I would like to speak to six point seven when that comes up, though.
Okay, so Counselor Gardi, you're on the phone. Do you have anything on? There you are. Counselor Gardi, do you have any on the consent besides six point seven?
I do not.
Okay, we'll go to one. Uh, Counselor Hollingsworth, do you have anything on consent?
Um, yes.
Which one?
I do. Um, just one second. I have to unmute myself.
Oh, you're unmuted. You're good.
Um, just six point two, community museum operating grants.
You got it. Go ahead.
Okay, um, I just want to once again take this opportunity to say, uh, well done. Um, it seems that, uh, our staff and Kathy Fisher's team and our museum team and so forth are always finding me. So I just want to, um, not really ask a question, but just to highlight the positive side. And I also would like to take this opportunity to say thank you to Kathy Fisher, her team, the museum, but really for one moment focus on, um, two thousand nineteen. I failed to congratulate them for a successful two thousand nineteen year and the number of visitors. Um, the number of events, and, um, I just want to make sure that, uh, she knows, her team knows that we do appreciate them and all their hard work, what they did in two thousand nineteen and their creative ideas. Um, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hollingsworth. Does anybody else want to speak to six point two? Okay, seeing none. Counselor Hollingsworth, do you have anything else on consent you wanted to speak to? Okay, nope. Counselor Christian, do you have any matters of consent you want to speak to?
Uh, no, just six point seven.
Okay, that brings us to Ward two. Uh, Counselor Dufour, do you have any matters in consent? Nope.
Uh, yes, six point four, please, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Counselor Dufour, Northern Avenue Improvement, six point four. Go ahead.
Okay, uh, I believe my question is for, uh, Mr. Elliott. Uh, in the report here, it looks like we have, uh, some more good news. Uh, from the construction sector where we were again, uh, got some really competitive pricing and we're under budget. Um, in the report, it lists one point eight million dollars that's remaining for, uh, uncommitted capital projects in either twenty twenty or twenty one. Um, will council be brought, uh, some options for that at a future meeting? Um, I I I can't help but notice that, uh, the same company has won, uh, the vast majority of our construction contracts this year, which also makes me think that, um, there may still be some opportunity for competitive pricing from the other companies out there for smaller jobs. So if you could, please comment on that, that'd be great.
Good question, Counselor.
Mr. Mayor, through. Mr. Mayor, uh, to Counselor Dufour, yes, uh, I'm sure staff, uh, will have discussions about where that money should be applied to, uh, capital projects. Okay, well, uh, for my part, uh, I think there's a strong argument to see it be spent in, uh, this construction season, if at all possible to, you know, have the maximum impact and to take advantage of, uh, the competitive pricing that we're seeing. So thank you very much, Mr. Elliott.
Anybody else in six point four? Okay, so is there anything else in the consent agenda, Counselor Dufour? Okay, so Counselor Bezzell Allen, we're back to you. Are you, is your mic working? Can she call in? Madison? Yeah, so maybe Counselor Bezzell Allen, can you call in with your phone and then we'll be able to hear you on audio that way? Counselor Dufour?
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, Counselor Bezzell Allen sent me, uh, just her recommendation to Mr. McConnell on that, uh, issue. Is it okay if I read that?
Absolutely.
Okay, uh, her recommendation would be to request that Mr. McConnell might be able to organize, uh, a collaborative session with A P H for, uh, an online session with patio owners to help clarify some of these requirements and, uh, eliminate any misinformation.
Okay, Mr. McConnell, did you get that?
I certainly did, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, very good. So I think that's a good piece of advice and you can follow up with Lisa Bezzell Allen if you want to discuss it further.
We'll do that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McConnell. I think that brings us to the at the the end of consent. So Madam Clerk, uh, if we can deal with the end of consent, please.
I had, uh, read the motion at the beginning. Okay, so it is, uh, accepting all of the items under Agenda Item Six, David, except Agenda Item six point seven.
All in favor? Motion is carried. So that brings us to, uh, six point seven. Mr. Gardi, you pulled six point seven, so I'm going to start with you.
Thank, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, you know, I want to, I want to thank, uh, Mr. Laverne for, uh, for the report. Um, I was, you know, I was a little, little disappointed by it. Um, I wanted to just sort of address that here and see if we could have a discussion further as how we can move forward. Um, I appreciate, um, that the report asked us to be supportive as a stakeholder with the, uh, blue box, uh, responsibility, uh, program for, uh, with producers taking care of what what they need to. Um, but, you know, admittedly, as the discussion earlier tonight, that's some time off. Um, I also note that the, uh, report referenced that no one in the province has attempted to, uh, pursue a ban on single use plastics and or, um, to to the best of my knowledge, uh, plastic bags. You know, the original motion, when I, when I put forward the original motion, I did a little research, so it would be, you know, an informed motion and and as part of it, I learned that, you know, roughly twenty two million pounds of plastic pollution every year ends up in the Great Lakes. So, you know, um, this being four or five, you know, years off potentially, maybe three. Um, you know, I think we could do what we 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 should try and do what we can, um, to be a leader. Um, I, we talked about acting boldly. I'd like us to, um, I, you know, the, as far as I'm concerned, the report didn't answer, uh, the question that, uh, or the the ask that was put out by council. Um, so I'm looking to, uh, move, uh, move, you know, more consistently in the direction and the spirit of of the motion.
Okay, uh, Counselor Hillsinger, did you want to speak to this as the second of the motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you know, further to Mr. Gardi's comments, uh, we need to do better as a, as every, every all over the world, we need to do better, um, and deal with plastics more successfully. There are many, uh, cities across Canada. There are, uh, businesses, grocery storage chains, et cetera, that are are dealing with this issue. And, um, I'm not comfortable that we're going to wait and see what happens three years from now. I think there are steps that we can take, uh, soon. Um, how soon? We're looking for, you know, for feedback and information on that. We know we're in a bit of a difficult time right now as it relates to using a single use of, uh, plastic bags in grocery stores. But that doesn't mean we can't look forward to seeing what we can do and when we can do it and and, uh, take some bold steps, uh, to, uh, to, to protect our, our city and our planet in a, in a completely different way. So I would certainly be looking for a report to come back to say what can we do and how soon can we do it, um, and and take some action. Thank you.
Counselor Christian?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I I read the report and I too was, um, disappointed. Uh, I might throw this out here right now and it's going to require a little bit more work, but I'm wondering if we could consider using our tax, uh, system to create an environment perhaps instead of mandating incentivizing businesses to reduce plastic. So in other words, just hypothetically, and it, I'm not opening it up for debate. I just want to get it out there that perhaps we could look at providing some kind of tax relief to those businesses that eliminate plastic and perhaps that's a discussion for a later date or a follow up resolution. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to go to Counselor Hollingsworth.
I just want to, um, make a comment. Um, first of all, I'm glad to see that this is, um, on our agenda. I'm also a great believer that we need to reduce our plastic bags, and I hope that this is a start to look at other ways we can reduce plastic. Um, I can see that maybe in the future, um, before Madison, I was about to took her position, we talked about eliminating plastic bottles, especially at um, the city, um, areas such as John Road Center. So I just want to commend, um, to say thank you that this is on our agenda. I was saying glad we're talking about this, and I do think that we need to hurry this up and not wait a period of two, one, five, ten, three years. I think we need as a city work on this as fast as possible to set, uh, the right example. Uh, since we live in such a beautiful area, the Great Lakes and so forth. That's all I want to say. But again, um, I will be coming forward about plastic bottles in the near future. Thank you.
Counselor Scott, you wanted to speak to this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yeah, so I I too like Counselor Gardi, uh, when I saw the report come back, I was, uh, was a little disappointed at how it seemed to be less of a fulsome report and more of a, well, some other work's going on. Let's just piggyback on that. I think, uh, I think the work was, I appreciate the work done there, but I I I think it kind of missed where Counselor Gardi and, uh, Counselor Hillsinger were going with the idea. Um, waiting three to five years isn't really what we need. We need a solution now. Um, I do like what Counselor Christian was saying. Uh, maybe a a fulsome report could have given us those options, um, rather than, you know, solution A, maybe we go with an incentive that if people, I don't know the, once again, I don't know how we could do that, but, uh, if we did go that option, uh, I think that that's something we could look at. Uh, there's, there's a lot out there, but we do need to act sooner rather than later. Uh, we are in a challenging time, given the, given the situation with pandemic. Uh, I do appreciate that we do need to use or some people would rather use, uh, single use plastics for the bags, but that doesn't ruin the fact or or take away from the fact that like Counselor Hollingsworth was saying, reducing the use of plastic bottles in city owned facilities is a great idea. Uh, little things like that, anything that we can do adds up. Uh, I think that that we have a great staff. We have some good, some good minds in there that can come up with some really good solutions, and I would like to see this report, uh, maybe go back to staff and and come back to council, uh, with some solutions and things we can do to implement today or this year or sooner than the, uh, adjustment of the blue back, the blue box program. So, uh, that that was kind of my my take on it. Uh, when I spoke to Counselor Gardi, I felt the same way as he did. Uh, so that was, that was my thoughts, but that that was everything. Thank you.
Yeah, no one left on a list here. Does anybody? So Counselor Bruni? I have you now. Go ahead. I want to, and Counselor Shoemaker, so when Counselor, yep, Counselor Bruni, you're unmuted.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I appreciate the report that came forward, but when I started reading it, I I was thinking of the COVID nineteen about we cannot bring our own personal bags in right now. What I like to see is bring the, send this report back to staff, but get businesses involved. Maybe they have ideas that that they can provide city staff. Uh, you know, which avenue we can, we can take to reduce plastic bags. I I think it's important if we, if we go out and get some public consultation, especially with business owners that have the plastic bags out there for, uh, for their customers. So I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Bruni. Anybody else? Uh, Counselor, Counselor Shoemaker, I have you. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You guys can hear me okay?
Yeah, we're good. You're good. You sound good.
Um, I, yeah, I I would agree with Counselor Gardi's remarks. I I do think that, um, the report, uh, did focus a lot on on plastic bags, but it it kind of missed what the request was, which was how we can, um, discourage or eliminate the use of plastic bags in town. So it talks about the legal authority to eliminate, but not anything about discouraging, and it also doesn't talk about how the city can, um, reduce its use of single use plastic. So I I do think that there's more work to be done here to really get at what council was asking, uh, for in the first place.
Yeah, so, uh, you know, just to, just to kind of summarize what I'm hearing, which I think is really consistent amongst all of you, and when I, when I looked at the resolution, I agree with you. Uh, I want to recognize that this specific employee, uh, this is his first report to council. And I want to recognize that I think he worked hard on it and, uh, where it might have felt short of our, uh, resolution. Uh, there was, there was some good work here and it was thoughtful, uh, but it didn't answer the specific question in the resolution. So you can accept this report. Because when I look at, when I look at the recommendations, there's nothing wrong with these recommendations, but we could still follow them. But I think, and I don't think we'll need a resolution to do this, but I'll I'll defer to the C A O. I think we can just, it's, there's clearly consensus from us that we want to send it back. We want to specifically direct staff to answer the fundamental question in the report, which is report back on a process by which council can within its legal authority discourage and or eliminate the use of plastic bags, including a plan for the municipality to reduce and eliminate its own use. So it's pretty explicit that we are asking for that. So I don't know if we really need to to pass another resolution. So I don't know if we really need to pass another resolution or if what the CEO has heard tonight is enough to get him to, to bring this report back and to have another one that follows when a bit more work's done on this. That doesn't prevent us from accepting this report and the recommendations in it. I don't think it precludes us from sending it back for some more work. Do you have any comments on that, Mr. CEO?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to yourself and all of council. You've given us a consistent message. We'll discuss it tomorrow at senior management and run a further report to you. That what I can do is share the minutes of senior management with you to ensure that you think we've captured the clarity that's been given to us tonight.
Is it council comfortable with that? And I'm just going to ask Counselor Gardi, Counselor Hilsinger, if they're comfortable with that approach, seeing as you're the mover and secondor of the motion.
Yeah, I'm, can you hear me? Sorry? Yeah, I'm comfortable with the direction. I, I just ask that, you know, whatever can be done to expedite things, I would appreciate. I also, also understand that we're under some extraordinary circumstances, so it may not be as quickly as I prefer. And you know what, Mr. Mayor, I also want to just acknowledge that I was not aware that this was Mr. Laverne's first attempt or first shot. It was, you know, it was a successful one in the sense that he got it back to us and I appreciate that. By no means do I want to discourage him from doing more good work. Thanks.
Counselor Hilsinger, you look like you wanted to add something to that.
Just to quickly say, if we could, if we could have it happen fairly, fairly soon, that, you know, within the constraints of what's going on right now, that would be great because it's something we'd like to take action on. As you can see, council's very unified on this position as soon as possible and focused on the goal, reduce or eliminate, and preferably eliminate. Thanks.
Okay, so we, what we can do then is just vote on the report and frankly, we can pass it because it's for information and, and we're authorizing staff to participate in municipal, the provincial consultation, which we would do in any event. And the CEOs indicated to us that they've got a consensus message from us that they'll, they'll take a look at the original motion and they'll, they'll focus on satisfying the elements of that motion. So if I can vote all in favor of the report? Any opposed? So the report carries unanimously. Thank you. So then we can move on, Madam Clerk, we can move on to the, you can vote on your e-scribe and then we can move on to the 7.4. Correct, Mr. CEO? Public Works in Engineering, West End Sewage Treatment Plant, Phase One upgrades?
That's correct.
Okay, counsel.
Regular, but there, as the bylaws are under Section 11 as, as bylaws.
Okay, so counsel, this is a significant project. Nice to see that it came back under budget. Counselor Shoemaker, you're probably going to ask if we think that has anything to do with the, the work that you undertook. And it's a fair question. I think the last time we tendered something like this, it came back over budget, so I'm happy myself to see it's under budget. It's a significant project. We, we can answer any questions you have on it and hopefully get the authority to move forward with it. So questions on this project? Show of hands. Okay, I got Counselor, breathing, Counselor.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Okay, so Counselor Shoemaker, go ahead.
You, you guessed correctly, Mr. Mayor. I was going to ask if we have a sense that this came back under, under budget because of the elimination of our restrictive bidding processes?
Mr. CEO, you can do your best answer that.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker. I will turn it over to Mr. Elliott, but I believe that's one element in amongst the reasons.
Mr. Mayor to Counselor Shoemaker, it is probably one of the factors, I know one of the big factors when we opened this, the East End plant tender was Walkerton. There's not as much work in the, in the industry right now, but I can certainly advise that this, this contractor is not signatory, so it opened the field up to us.
That's great. Glad to hear.
Anything else in this project, Counselor Shoemaker? Okay, anybody else?
Thanks.
Anybody else in this project? So thanks staff for their good work on it. Looking forward to moving forward. All in favor? Motion is carried.
Under Agenda Item Eight, Agenda Item 8.1, motion by Counselors Shoemaker and Scott, whereas the economic impact of COVID-19 is likely to affect the local and global economy for many months beyond the return of the economy to relative normalcy. And whereas governments around the world and at all levels across Canada are attempting to stimulate the economy into recovery for the benefit of their residents. And whereas the city of St. Mary wishes to contribute to the stimulation of the local economy for the benefit of local residents and businesses. Now therefore be it resolved that staff examine the impact of a reduction of up to 25% in local building permit fees and make a recommendation on whether a reduction can be implemented and a recommendation on the extent of any proposed reduction to spur or advance local developments that might not otherwise have been completed in 2020. Further be it resolved that any proposed reduction expire as of December 31, 2020 and that staff report on any proposed reduction by July 2020.
Hey, Counselor Shoemaker, do you want to speak to this? It's your motion.
I would like to save my comments for the end, Mr. Mayor.
You don't get to speak after me, so you can, you save your comments for the second last.
Okay.
Who, who, does anybody have any comments on this, on this resolution? So we'll start with Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't want to hopefully take anything away from Counselor Shoemaker's comments, but I'll just quickly give an idea where my head was at in seconding this and that was, I know that we have received some outreach from, from different areas in the city about this and, and those aren't the, those aren't necessarily the businesses or the areas that I had in mind when seconding this. I had in mind people undertaking their own jobs, smaller businesses to help those people out. I really do think that, given that we're six months into the year, this, this is really just a report at the end of the day, coming back to us, seeing on the feasibility, the impact, et cetera. So we could make a decision later. I do think that it's worthwhile to take a look at this and see how much it could potentially save for, for the residents and, and what the actual impact that would be on, on the city. Those, that's kind of just where my thought was on this when I seconded it. I, I believe there'll be some more substantial comments from Counselor Shoemaker, so I'll leave that up to him. I don't want to step on anyone's toes. That's just where my head was at. That's where I was coming from. So hopefully we can get the support of council on this one. Thank you.
Counselor Bezal Allen?
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
There you go. Thank you. Through you, through you, Mr. Mayor, to, to Ms. Shell. I just want to clarify that in 2019, the revenues were 1.2 million. Is that correct in permits?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Bezal Allen. Yes, you are correct. 2019 was $1.2 million in permit revenues that were reported.
Excellent. And our direct cost for the building was, building department was about, just not quite a mil, 965,000?
Yes, you're correct.
And currently, right now, sitting through May 2020, we have revenues right now in building permits of about $250,000.
Approximately, yes.
So do you foresee potentially a loss in the building division at year-end of 2020?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Bezal Allen. That would be very difficult to predict. I'm not the expert in the type of building that's going on or pyramids that are, are coming in. Some could, if there's a large project, we could exceed what we've got last year. It really depends. Freddie Paziban, the CBO, would probably be better to answer that question.
So we have Don Elliott and Freddie on the line, so whomever's speaking to this, please feel free if you have anything to add there.
Mr. Mayor, Freddie is not in attendance tonight, but I can take a stab at that. We don't, very hard to predict, obviously. We're hoping for a year that is as good as last year. It's tracking behind revenues understandably, probably because of the pandemic, but we're seeing it potentially pick up. So we're hoping for a year at least as good as last year, if not better.
Thank you. So, Michelle, if there is a deficit currently right now as of year-end 2019, we had 256,000 in the Building Reserve Fund, correct?
Through Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Bezal Allen, yes, there's 256,625 as of December 31st.
And if we have, so if this reduction goes through with the 25% and if we are seeing lower than average incomes for permits, if the reserve does not cover the deficit, then where do we find the remainder to support the building activities?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Bezal Allen. The building permit area is self-funded through fees. So if the expenditures are more than the revenue that's coming in, it comes out of the reserve balance. If there's not enough in the reserve balance to cover it, then it becomes part of the levy. Or in this case, because it's only for the current year, it would become part of the deficit if there is one, or it would be covered by surpluses in other areas potentially.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Shell, for that clarification. And just more of a question to either Counselor Shoemaker or Counselor Scott, just in terms of the due diligence behind this resolution. Did you do any sort of research either anecdotally or by talking to building that, that the savings would create a surge in building permits? That there were some potential developers were not considering or putting things on hold and that the 25% reduction would stimulate? And also when you're looking at that it's a benefit to local residents, was there any sort of affirmation that there would be some trickle downs such as if someone's building an apartment building and they have a reduction of 25% in their building fees, that that would maybe perhaps trickle down to have more affordable rents for the residents? If either one of you could answer that.
Thanks for the question. I'll take a stab at it because I drafted the motion. Thanks to Counselor Scott for seconding it. The, the, the motion is for a report, so staff would have been expected to examine all that in their, in their studies. But what I saw around the province was that places are looking at waiving development charges or reducing them or deferring them or whatever the case might be. And since we don't have development charges, my view was that we could do our part as a municipality to make the building process, process more affordable or spur some economic activity that way. And so that is where this stemmed from, from what I was seeing across the province. But the actual nitty-gritty of your questions, I think, is properly staffed to respond to in the, in the report itself. And I'll just note that I'm looking for a report on the reduction of up to 25%, not necessarily 25%.
Counselor Bezal Allen, is that, do you have anything else?
Nothing, nothing further at this point. Thank you.
Okay, so next on my list is Counselor Hollingsworth. Yeah, oh, no, no, you're not muted yet. There you go, Counselor Hollingsworth.
Thank you. Counselor Benzwell answered most of my questions. But through you, Mayor, to Mr. White, is there currently a backlog right now on building permits?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Hollingsworth. I'll have to turn that one over to Mr. Elliott to answer.
Mr. Mayor to Counselor Hollingsworth, no, I don't believe there's a backlog right now. There's always plans under review. There's current, current applications that are under review, but I don't believe there's a backlog. I believe staff is keeping up.
Thank you. That's good information to know. And with regards to, I guess, the resum, resolution itself, Counselor Benzwell answered basically the right question about a sample. I do have comments, but I'm going to keep my comments till the end. That's it for my questions, but I do have comments for, at the end.
Okay, Counselor Bruni's next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions. And I don't know if maybe Mr. Elliott can answer this, but if this resolution is passed tonight, do you believe it will discourage any applicants to come forward for, for permits until the end of July? To find, this way they can, if it's, if it's passed and it comes back to us and there's a 25% savings?
Mr. Mayor to Counselor Bruni, I, it's very difficult to answer that question, but I can say that from my conversation with Freddie today, the, the changing of, of permit fees requires consultation with the users and 21 days' notice. I'm not sure we can, I, I know we can't come back by July and not sure about August. This might drag on into September, depending on how, how long it goes. So if there's applicants out there that, that wish to wait to see if council is going to do this, then clearly, yes, they would be delaying their projects.
And a lot of the projects are in the summer, spring, summer and fall. Do we have, does, does your department know of any big jobs that might be coming forward?
Mr. Mayor to Counselor Bruni, yes, there's always a fairly good knowledge of some of the bigger projects that are, are potentially coming our way. Yes.
So if this is voted in favor and it will delay because of the consultation, possibly some of the projects out there might not get started this year?
Again, it's very difficult to predict the future, Counselor Bruni. I'd have to be getting into the heads of the developers and the applicants and I, I don't care to do that.
Okay. Do you want my comments now, Mr. Mayor, or wait till the?
Yeah, let's, let's, let's make them as we go. And then so Counselor, Counselor wants to go last here, so at least he'll, he'll appear what you have to say. So I'm going to take your comments and I'll go back to Counselor Hollingsworth so she could have her comments, but, and then we'll, we'll go from there. So Counselor Bruni, your comments, please.
Yeah, thank you. And I appreciate both counselors for bringing this forward, Counselor Shoemaker and Counselor Scott. And I know Counselor Shoemaker did mention, we do not have development charges out there for, for these big construction jobs and that's a huge savings. We're one of few municipalities, over 400 municipalities, that do not have these development charges. So they are saving out there. My biggest worry is that this 25% savings, if, if public consultation occurs, this will delay the process. And by delaying the process, we, we might not get much development going on in the summertime. And this might be delayed until the following year with some of these construction companies. That's my biggest fear. And just a comment out there, I never received anything from anybody stating that they wanted their, their permit fees reduced by 25% or 15 or 10 or 5. I think if we start giving out all our revenue, we're going to be in serious trouble. And if the revenue from these permits are approximately $250,000 right now or the 25% is $250,000, that's, that's a quite a bit of money that we need for our city here. So I will be voting against it. I thank Counselor Shoemaker and Counselor Scott for bringing this forward, but I will be against it. Thanks.
So we're going to go back to Counselor Hollingsworth so she can make her comments and then I'll go, I'll keep on continuing through my list.
Thank you. I have about four main comments. First of all, touch on the sample. I can appreciate that if this is approved, that staff will go out and really dive into a sample. I just want to give you my sample. I have had the opportunity to speak with developers. I've had the opportunity to speak with contractors and also individuals. And as most people in the construction business know, the plans, when you're building a house, when you're building an apartment building and so forth, these plans are not done today. They're not done in June. They're not done in July. A lot of the planning is done usually in the winter, leading up to the building, because you want to be prepared and ready. When that frost is gone, you want to be ready to dig. So these construction projects that are happening, they have been planned for the last six months and they're happening now. I'm actually quite worried about the future, 2021. We keep on reading that there could be a second wave happening. So hypothetically, if a second wave might happen, we need to make sure that we have other financial tools available. If we start using this particular tool now, then when we really do need to stimulate the construction industry, we may not be able to have this tool available. So let's put this on the back burner till 2021 and start thinking about this more during the budget time, during maybe January, when construction, when contractors, developers start to really do their plans. Point three. When you're into the construction business, again, going back to my sample, two main developers have reached out to me and they have said they're working on single dwelling houses more right now than larger units, apartment buildings, because they're still nervous that Doug Ford may put another stop, may put another isolation in place. And the problem is, when you start working on a large project, such as multi-unit complex, and you're already undertaking the building, and if there is another isolation, that means your tradespeople are stopped. They have to go home. That means that you have materials that are exposed to the elements. You may already have your foundation poured, but then you have to stop. Or you may have your trusses out in the weather and they will be exposed to weather elements. So sometimes developers may halt small or multi-construction because they're nervous about our premier Doug Ford. They don't know what's going to happen if there is going to be another second wave and we'll back in isolation. The sample I have gone out to seek states that, yes, construction is happening right now. A lot of our, around our community, contractors, our tradesmen's are very busy. And actually, the main piece that our, of main fear is that the materials, sometimes the materials are not being offered or available right now because the factories have been shut down. That is another fear of our contractors. For example, paint is not so much available right now. Small things like that to larger things. So I would say that I am going to vote against this for now and that this might be a tool we want to look at for next year and 2021, if for heaven's sakes, if the second wave happens and heaven's sake, if we're in a financial crisis. But for now, I'm going to be voting against this because based on me reaching out to other contractors, major developers in this community, and also individuals doing projects. And thank you.
Counselor DuFors is next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a quick question for Dawn Elliott. Dawn, if you could, how much would a building permit be? Ballpark amount for a $10 million apartment building?
To Mayor, to Counselor DuFors, building permits generally range around 1% of the project. So if a $10 million project, the building permit would be probably around $100,000.
Okay, and for a regular guy to build a deck, about how much is that building permit?
That is in the vicinity of $125, a flat fee for a small residential deck.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to go into my comments now. And my question, basically, we've heard from finance, from Michelle, that decrease in revenue needs to be made up by either the reserve fund or by the levy. We've heard from Mr. Elliott that the greatest benefit to a 25% fee reduction is going to be felt by developers who already have the working capital to build large, significant buildings. So my question is, why would we potentially add to the tax levy a subsidy that is largely geared towards wealthy developers? I don't think that's good policy during normal times, and I certainly don't think it's good policy during abnormal economic conditions right now. We know very clearly that the lead time for major developments is at least 12 to 18 months. So I would strongly put it to my colleagues on council that there is no developer out there that is sitting on a significant $5 to $10 million building that has not already lined up everything from subtrades to materials to drawings by now for the 2020 construction season. So I just, I think it's a well-intentioned motion. I think that in the future, that there may be an opportunity to examine our permit fees in relation to our reserve funding levels. I don't think here and now is the time to do it. I think that especially when I look at, you know, working in the construction industry myself, the delays that we experienced from Locates last year really hurt us at the end of the year. And any further delays in this construction season, just to have two bad years piled on top of each other would be really unfortunate. I think council should really do the right thing here, not call for the report. Let's stick with the status quo. Let's let our building department do the good job that they've already done in keeping up with building fees. And let's reexamine this later if we need to. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Nero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me start by saying, I certainly understand the intent of the resolution by Counselor Shoemaker. I do have a concern, though, that it looks like it may be counterproductive. I think, you know, instead, the resolution asks that we contribute to the stimulation of the local economy. This may be, in my mind, maybe a little bit counterproductive. It may help in small jobs, but in the bigger commercial residential developments, those contractors are going to wait to see what happens with this. And if they have to wait till the end of the summer, that just becomes counterproductive to stimulating the economy in my eyes. People won't get back to work. If, you know, if they're not working already, if they're still waiting to be called back to work and some of these jobs don't start, well, there's just going to be a delay in stimulating the economy. So although I realize the intent, and I certainly would like to, I don't know that I can support this resolution.
Counselor Christian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess a question about, if in fact this resolution was passed tonight, would we be in a situation where we, not necessarily legally, but perhaps be obliged to reconsider those building permits that have just recently been issued or may be issued between the time that we pass this resolution and when we get a report back, where we could potentially reduce this amount? Would we be obligated, perhaps, Mr. Elliott? Could respond to that, the dynamic there?
Mr. Elliott?
Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Christian, certainly if, certainly the applicants that are being processed now would say, hey, I want to get in on the 25% discount. So whether we could process that prior to, I don't know. I know it would be extra work for staff in that light, but certainly, if there's a discount to be had, there's going to be a desire to take advantage of it by the applicants.
Yeah, I, again, I like the intent of the resolution. I don't, I don't think we can deny the fact that Counselor Shoemaker comes forward with many great resolutions. And I think the intent by both himself and Counselor Scott are well-intended, but I think it's timing more than anything. If this thing would have hit a few months earlier and staff had time to process this and we could get that out to the community, it might work. I just think the timing of it right now doesn't fit. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Counselor Shoemaker?
Mayor, and thanks to all the folks who've commented prior to me. I do, you know, I could sense the way this is, this was headed prior to, prior to today's meeting because of questions that were being circulated to staff about various aspects of the procedure of how we would go about this. There's a couple of things specifically that I think council needs to really look inward at. We have incurred a deficit up to this point of a certain amount, but not because we have participated in stimulating the economy, I would say, in any other way. We're incurring a deficit because of changes in work structure for various employees. We've incurred a deficit because expenses are higher in certain areas because of the changes in work structure. We haven't put out money in any way or put our skin in the game, per se, to assist with the stimulation in the way that the federal provincial government have. Now, I don't think we have the ability to do that to the extent that they have because we have a much smaller tax base and we have limited tools at our hands with which to stimulate our economy. But this is one of the ways we could put some money into the local stimulation of the economy. And I do find it disingenuous when staff says, well, this could take till September, when it's something that they clearly do not want to push forward. Because when it's something that wants to get pushed forward, we have it at the next council meeting. So 21 days only brings us to June 29th and we're going to have a report back in September. It just doesn't jive, frankly, with the timeframes that are realistic. So that's a bit of an aside there. Secondly, I do think that, other than Counselor Nero, who I'll commend on his resolution to waive the sewer surcharge, nobody else has brought anything forward. So here's my idea, and I'll bring others forward, of course, and Counselor Scott, of course, for seconding the motion. But where are the others? So we can all point the finger and say, this is a terrible idea. We can't do this for that reason, and we can't do this for this reason. But bring some ideas forward. This is our responsibility as council to assist our community through this pandemic. And if it's not this, it's something else. But I want to be debating those things. And this is the only resolution on the agenda tonight to actually do that. The other ones, send a letter to encourage regional reopenings. And the other, you know, throughout the past two, three meetings, really only Counselor Nero has brought forward a motion that helps our taxpayers, our citizens, save money or stimulate the economy. So I have no hope that this is going to pass tonight. I think it would have been a benefit to the local community, but I can accept that it's not council's will. But I look forward to what their suggestions and ideas will be on a go-forward basis. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So I'm going to wrap up, and I'm glad that I did reserve myself the spot to speak last because I didn't take issue with two things you said, Counselor Shoemaker. The first is, I don't think it's appropriate to kind of attack councils or criticize, not council, I'm sorry, staff's response. There's a period where staff would have to engage in what I understand are consultative periods that are required. So that puts them out three weeks. And I don't think that the city's engineer said that it would come back in September. He said it might be that late, but he didn't say it would necessarily be that late. And I want to just indicate that, independent of what staff's opinion is on this, I have every confidence that staff would work in good faith to get it back in a reasonable amount of time. And I want to just recognize that and put that on the record. The second thing is, I really think it's disingenuous to attack council for not having put forward other work and other ideas because it's not accurate and it's not actually relevant to your motion. The city councilors have been working hard throughout this process. I worked hard with Counselor Nero for a number of weeks on the issue that related to the sewer surcharge. And there are other matters that city councilors brought forward. There are matters that they brought forward directly through council. And there are matters that they brought forward through the work that Counselor Hillsinger did, reaching out to them. But also, staff did a really good job in dealing with this pandemic and bringing things forward to us. So there's work that they did that minimized the amount of work that we had to direct them to do. So I don't think that criticism is accurate. In specific respect to the substance of your motion, you have said a number of times, it is intended to stimulate the economy. There is no evidence anywhere that this would stimulate anything. I think the only effect it would have would be to create a problem where a group of people have already paid this year's permitting fees and they will feel like they overpaid. There's a group of people who are in process, who are going to be concerned about paying a current permitting fee that might be reduced. And there are going to be people that are going to wait to see whether or not it will be reduced so they can take advantage of that, which I think is counterproductive. So I actually don't believe there's any indication anywhere that this would stimulate the local economy. And it's motivated by the fact that other communities have reduced their development charges. And you rightly point out that we don't have any. But I don't know if you were able to find an example of other communities reducing these fees. If you were, I'm sure you would have brought that up today. The reality of this motion, although I believe it is well-intentioned, is that it will not, I don't believe, have the effect it is intended to have. And it could have actually the opposite effect that is intended to have. And in the end, if anything, we do not do a good enough job cost recovering on user fees. And when we don't cost recover on user fees, we add things to a deficit or the tax base. And all of us, to a person, do not want to increase our residential, commercial, and industrial taxes. So we shouldn't be undertaking activities that could potentially result in an increase to those tax bases. So the motion, though well-intended, I don't think will achieve its desired results. And I think it would be a mistake for us to waste any time on it or to have staff undertake the work and potentially delay projects. For that purpose, I'll be voting against them. So the votes up. Everybody, a po, in favor? Two opposed? Opposed? Counselor Gardi, your hand went up at an awkward time. I don't know how you're voting. Okay, so if you can submit your votes on eScribe. So broadband internet access, 8.2.
I don't have, on the waiting build permit fees, Counselor Gardi?
Counselor Gardi, on the last vote, were you in favor or opposed?
In favor. Counselor Vezel Allen?
In favor.
Opposed.
Counselor Bruni?
Counselor Bruni was opposed. You had to stand up.
Counselor Shoemaker in the affirmative?
He was in favor.
Counselor Christian?
Opposed.
Counselor Nero?
He was opposed.
Opposed.
Counselor Hollingsworth?
She was opposed.
Fails eight to three. And the next one, I have a motion by counselors Christian and Gardi. Whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has had a significant impact on our economy and our education system, and whereas a number of people have had to work from home and all of our students at every level have had to migrate to online learning from home. And whereas the transition from external workspace and education space to home workspace and education space requires affordable access to the internet and dependable quality connectivity. And whereas it is clearly evident that not all parts of Sault Ste. Marie or areas of the larger Algoma community, where many people who work and learn in Sault Ste. Marie reside, have access to an affordable, dependable, and quality internet connection. Now therefore be it resolved that Sault Ste. Marie City Council hereby calls upon both provincial and federal governments to prioritize an immediate investment in broadband infrastructure to ensure that all people and communities within Sault Ste. Marie and Algoma have access to affordable, dependable, and quality internet. Further be it resolved that the city work with any interested community partners. Further be it resolved that the city work with any interested community partners, specifically including the Sault Ste. Marie Innovation Centre, to lobby both the provincial and federal governments to make said investment.
Counselor Christian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you had pointed out, at our last meeting, you invited councillors to bring forward ideas, which you just stated during the pandemic. And and as you know, we had the opportunity to discuss a few possibilities that I wanted to bring forward relating specifically to future Sault Ste. Marie initiative. And we both agreed that the internet connectivity in Algoma region was a key issue. And I thank the mayor for suggesting this because it's a sensitive issue and something that needs attention. I can tell you as an educator that right now, teaching remotely the last few months is made a lot worse when students don't have reliable internet access. During the layoff, students, you know, they've experienced varying levels of anxiety. A lot of students struggle with being isolated from the classroom. And it's way worse when you have students that don't have reliable internet. I mean, as a teacher, we've had to make arrangements to get courier service to deliver learning materials. We're not getting stuff back from students in a timely fashion. And I can tell you that there's over 1,000 of them just in our board. So I I I realize that the provincial government just made a major announcement to invest millions on the internet and cell phone service in remote rural communities. But I think this resolution, although it came after the fact, it it clearly articulates our expectations for funding in Algoma region. Rather than anticipating what the provincial investment might mean, we're making a specific ask. And I also think, you know, we're laying claim to our share of the funding and ensuring that remote and rural doesn't mean everything south of Perry Sound, that we in the north and particularly Algoma require the investment. Sault Ste. Marie project, which we talked about last meeting, was making some real inroads. And I think in order to protect the important business sector and ensure growth in the future, we have to have available and affordable broadband access. You know, good ideas, committed efforts, and positive outlook can only carry us so far. Reliable and affordable internet is now a basic tool in the business toolbox, and we can aggressively compete without it. And as the premier stated, reliable high-speed internet access is no longer a luxury in the 21st century. So I hope we can get behind this and and pass this message on to our MPP. Before I leave, I just want to recognize the efforts of the educational stakeholders in the Sioux. I know they've been working behind the scenes for years to to promote this. So I think it's all coming together, and I think passing this resolution sends a clear message.
Thank you, Counselor Christian. Counselor Gardi, did you want to speak to it as a second there?
Yeah, just real quickly, Mr. Mayor, it specifically impacts, you know, some areas of Ward Five that Counselor Scott and I represent, and we hear it often. I also know that there's been a lot of talk and some alleged action at the federal level. But it just hasn't been the case. You know, I've discussed this with Counselor with Member of Parliament Sheehan in the past as well about the feds doing more than lip service and putting some real dollars, put an action plan behind it. So, you know, if you don't have reliable internet service these days, you're in a vulnerable position, and you're at a disadvantage. And, you know, Counselor Christian, and your idea was a great one, and I was happy to support it.
Any other councillors have comments on this? Counselor Hollingsworth, go ahead.
I just quickly comment, I'm glad to see this as well on our agenda. And I know from a DSAV perspective, especially since the COVID, on our board, we have talked about students that may not have access to the internet. And I know DSAV has been working very hard on trying to close that gap. So it's a temporary gap, and hopefully this will get the attention of the higher-up levels of government. And I'm glad to support this. But I still think that, once we support this, we have to keep on knocking at the door. We can't just do this once. We, I think, need to follow up with this in a few months and just keep screaming about this. And I do strongly recommend that we get Phenom, and we get our AMO, and we get our other Northern Ontario groups together to do the same thing that you two councillors have done. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments on this? Being none, if you can please vote. All in favor? Motion carried.
Under Agenda Item 8.3, a motion by councillors Hillsinger and Hollingsworth. Whereas Ontario has for several months now been in the grips of a COVID-19 pandemic, which has caused many Ontarians to be ill and has taken a terrible toll in lives lost, especially among our elderly citizens. And whereas, on the advice of provincial public health officials, significant lockdown orders were issued on a province-wide basis, which brought about the closure of most businesses and many public spaces and facilities in an effort to contain the spread of the COVID-19 virus. And whereas while those measures did help to contain the spread of the virus and save lives here in the Sioux and in Algoma generally, they also had the effect of putting many people out of work and placing many businesses and people under severe financial stress. And whereas acknowledging that the spread of the virus and its impact on people has been uneven across the province, with the Greater Toronto Area facing much bigger challenges, while communities like the Sioux have seen relatively fewer of the potentially devastating effects of COVID-19. And whereas since the city of Sault Ste. Marie and District of Algoma generally have been relatively successful in containing the spread of the virus and limiting the strain on the healthcare system, and as such have very positive results as measured against the indicators commonly suggested as a guide to reopening. And whereas, given that the continuation of the province-wide shutdown of businesses and other facilities and enterprises in Sault Ste. Marie will unnecessarily cause continued unemployment, financial hardship, damage to business and the economy, and increased stress among citizens. Now therefore be it resolved that, one, the mayor be authorized to write to the Chief Medical Officer of Health for Algoma, the Chief Medical Officer of Health for Ontario, the Member of Provincial Parliament for Sault Ste. Marie and Algoma, the Minister of Health for Ontario, and the Premier of Ontario, expressing strong support for the implementation of a regional approach to reopening if communities can meet defined public health metrics, and requesting that the city of Sault Ste. Marie and Algoma District should be permitted to develop and implement such a reopening plan of its own. Number two, the letter conveyed to the recipients both a concern for other areas of the province harder hits than Sault Ste. Marie, but also a clear recognition of the fact that circumstances have fortunately been much better in our city, and that ongoing application of a province-wide shutdown approach will cause continued unnecessary economic and social disruption, including high unemployment, financial hardship, business failure, and social problems in Sault Ste. Marie. Whereas our own area's reopening plan will give us an opportunity to get people back to work and see life return to at least a new normal for the people of our city and district. Number three, city staff be directed to develop, per discussion with the district medical officer of health and the community at large, a responsible reopening plan based on the framework for reopening the province, which reflects the readiness of Sault Ste. Marie and the Algoma District to reopen more rapidly and provides a framework within which this can be done safely and respecting public health requirements in areas such as childcare, hospitality, and public transportation, to report back to city council as soon as possible.
Okay, so we're gonna start with Counselor Hillsinger. Is there a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While things have changed slightly today with regards to this, for a very long time, the province was very firm in their opinion that the province had to open as one regardless of what conditions were in various different communities and areas. And I, while we we are starting to see a regional, or we have seen as of this morning, a regional approach to be being applied, and that's that's good. I I believe it's important that we be allowed, as a community, to develop a plan of our own and be allowed to open safely and as directed and supported by public health so that we in Sault Ste. Marie and Algoma can 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 move our economy along in a way that's that's safe, that we can start our recovery as soon as possible. You know, if we're ready, we should be allowed to receive, to proceed. You know, we need to get people back to work. Our businesses, many, many, many of them are struggling. It's it's very, very difficult. And while there's no one to blame for anything, if we can safely, and I know that we can, using the guidance of public health, get ourselves back to what's being referred to as new normal sooner, then I think that we should be allowed and prove that we can do this and be allowed to do this. It's incredible financial stress and emotional and mental stress for many people. Balancing work and family without having daycare is extremely difficult on people. And, you know, businesses' revenues in many, many cases have been severely reduced. So I thank you to Counselor Hollingsworth for supporting this. And I do hope we're able to confirm and and have this direction that we do right to the various different people, as is indicated in the motion. And we we are allowed to proceed as is safe for our community and our district.
Okay, so Counselor Hollingsworth, did you want to speak to this as a second there?
I just want to say again, Counselor Hillsinger, thank you for bringing this to council. I'm very happy to support it. And again, I just want to reiterate the importance of working with our partners throughout Northern Ontario to, again, emphasize that Northern Ontario is unique and different from Southern Ontario. And this is one example of many more to come, that we of Northern Ontario have to have a strong voice to stand up for what is right for us. So thank you, and I'm glad that you brought this to council.
So we also have the premier's announcement today, and so the province is moving in this direction. But I want to recognize that Counselor Hillsinger and other councillors raised this issue with me weeks ago. And the CEO can indicate that him and I have weekly calls with our MPP and our MP, and we in turn raised this issue with with our MPP weeks ago. And I want to recognize that the work he's done to advocate advocate for this this approach within this cabinet, in this government. But I want to take this opportunity to speak to the city because I think it's really important. We we are doing very well here. Our numbers are low. We had 21 identified cases, all of which have been resolved. Our identified percentage of positive cases relative to negative cases, when you look at the whole test total, is under a third of a percent. I think we're we're significantly under a third of a percent, approaching a quarter of a percent. That's relatively low. And the reason why we've done so well is I think a lot of people in the community have really followed the public health advice to date. And for us to do well in this next stage, and for us to continue to to be in a position where we can open our economy and not slide backwards, we all have to follow the public health advice. If you have any COVID-19 symptoms, you need to self-isolate, and you need to stay home. Even if you don't think you have anything, or you don't think you have it, or you think you might have a cold, or you think you might have another bug, if you have any symptoms, you have to self-isolate, and you have to stay home. If you don't have symptoms and you're out in about the community doing permissible things, please physical distance. Please keep at least two meters between you and anybody else. Make sure you wash your hands frequently. And this is an important addition that public health is asking of us right now. Keep track of your close contacts. This is critical because if you do test positive for COVID-19, they're going to ask you for your close contacts. Everybody you've connected with over the recent timeframe. And if you can give that to them quickly, they can start contract tracing quickly. So we need to show the rest of the province that we deserve to be in this first tranche. We need to show everybody that we will continue to do what we need to do and that we will be a safe community. I'm confident we can do it, but we've got to continue to do it by working together and following public health advice. So please learn about physical distancing, and please practice physical distancing, and teach people around you too. And we can do that respectfully. So if somebody is is coming into your space and closer to two meters to you, you can back up from them and explain to them why you're doing. And you can encourage other people to do it. Because if we all follow these rules, we'll continue to open, and hopefully we'll be able to, you know, get rid of this virus entirely. But until we have a, the the medical community catches up with the virus, and they can do that, we need to incorporate and adopt the physical distancing principles for us to be successful when we move forward. So I really encourage everybody to learn about them and do that. I think we all support this motion. It's, you know, we're we're getting to the point where it's happening in any event. But I'm happy to write to the province and reaffirm our support for it and ask them to continue down this road. And we'll continue working together as a community. If we can call a vote on it, all in favor? Motion is carried. Madam Clerk, do you have everybody's votes?
I'm just doing them manually. I believe it was unanimous.
Look, unanimous to me. Yeah, no one's indicating opposition. So that brings us to 8.4.
I have a motion by councillors Nero and Gardi. Whereas the 2019 novel coronavirus, COVID-19, has impacted municipalities throughout Canada, including our own community of Sault Ste. Marie. And whereas during this pandemic, the federal and provincial governments have rolled out numerous support programs for large and small businesses, employers, employees, seniors, and students. And whereas the federal and provincial governments have provided billions of dollars in relief during this pandemic to these various groups through their support programs. And whereas despite repeated requests by the Federation of Canadian Municipalities and the Association of Municipalities of Ontario to date, there have been no announcements regarding relief and funding to cope with municipal budget deficits created by the pandemic. And whereas the COVID-19 financial impact to the city of Sault Ste. Marie to May 31, 2020, is $1 million to the operating budget and a further $2 million to the capital funding budget. And whereas if closures and other COVID-19 restrictions last into the fall, our city's budget deficit can only increase. And whereas reopening city services after COVID-19 may result in additional expenses as municipalities adhere to new restrictions in providing services. And whereas municipalities, including Sault Ste. Marie, have no freedom to run deficits, and the only primary means of collecting revenue to provide city services is through property taxation, facility rentals, and transit revenue. And whereas during COVID-19, the federal and provincial governments have done commendable work in getting through the health side of this pandemic, as well as providing financial relief to various groups. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Sault Ste. Marie requests that the federal and provincial governments extend emergency funding to municipalities to mitigate the financial impact of COVID-19 so that Sault Ste. Marie can continue to provide essential services without considering cuts in service or increases to the taxpayers who may have already been negatively impacted by COVID-19. And further be it resolved that copies of this resolution, along with a letter from Mayor Provenciano, be forwarded to the Right Honourable Justin Trudeau, Prime Minister of Canada, the Honourable Doug Ford, Premier of Ontario, the Honourable Catherine McKenna, Minister of Infrastructure and Communities, Terry Sheehan, MP of Sault Ste. Marie, the Honourable Steve Clark, Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, the Honourable Ross Romano, Minister of Colleges and Universities, and MPP of Sault Ste. Marie.
Okay, so Counselor Nero? Go ahead.
Am I on?
You are.
Okay. First, let me thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your help in the sewer surcharge motion and in reviewing this motion as well. And also to agreeing to write the letter to accompany this motion. I want to also thank Counselor Gardi for seconding this motion. So I'll I'll be brief because the motion is long enough, and I think it's it's self-explanatory. But, you know, we've all heard the latest announcement by the Prime Minister to provide $14 billion to the provinces and territories to help reopen the economies. Some of that funding is supposed to flow through to municipalities to help in continuing to provide core public services such as transit. Was also announced that $2.2 billion in annual infrastructure funding for communities paid out of the gas tax will be made available to municipalities more sooner than later. But but this funding was previously allocated money. It's not new money that's going to municipalities. It's money that our staff have most likely already considered when finalizing our 2020 budget. This motion is meant primarily to address the shortfalls in this budget caused as a direct result of COVID-19. Specifically, the loss Specifically, the lost revenue from facilities that were not open with facility rent not collected and transit revenue that was lost. In addition, there was a significant cost to some of the decisions made by council to help residential and business taxpayers through this pandemic. So all of these things together with additional expenses that we're going to incur by adhering to the new restrictions as we reopen the economy will create an even bigger hole in our budget. And we certainly welcome, while we certainly welcome the fast-tracking of, of our annual infrastructure funding, that's what we need that money for, is infrastructure projects. It's not to put it back into our budgets to make up the deficit that we have incurred. We, we definitely don't want to stop work on our infrastructure. So that money has to be used specifically for that purpose. What we need, and that's the reason for the motion, is funding to ensure that we return to a balanced budget. And by having that fund, funding, we can eliminate any deficits that were caused by COVID-19. So the biggest takeaway is that if we have to make up that deficit on our own, we can only do two things. We can make it up by increasing taxes, increasing facility rental rates, increasing service fees. Or we can make it up by cuts to services that we provide. And we all know that we don't want to do that. So I would urge council that we send this motion off to the people that are copied at the bottom. And, you know, FCM has been working on this. And we have not received, or they have not received any concrete answers as of yet. And hopefully this will help in some way. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Nero. Councillor Gardi, were you the seconder on that?
I was, Mr. Mayor.
Did you want to say anything?
I will, briefly. You know, Mr. Nero said it quite eloquently and quite succinctly. How the federal government specifically can't appreciate that we are the, you know, closest, we're, we're closest on the ground here. And, and, you know, they want to provide relief that will impact people as quickly as they can. One great way of doing it is through municipalities. It should have been done already. Mr. Councillor Nero is bang on on this. I appreciate your support. And I'm going to say one more thing. You know, nothing moves people like Mr. Trudeau and Mr., Mr. Ford and others listed there than direct outreach from constituents. So if you're supportive and you think that our municipality, municipalities across the country and the province should be getting direct assistance, then send anybody on that list a quick email. They would be very beneficial. Thank you.
Any other comments from councillors on this motion? All in favor? Motion is carried. Please vote on eScribe. Madam Clerk is carried unanimously. If, if anybody hasn't voted, you can enter their vote.
And that will bring us to bylaws. The consent motion, councillors Christian and Gardi, resolved that all bylaws under item 11 of the agenda under date June 8, 2020, save and accept bylaw 2020-123. Be approved.
All in favor? Motion's carried.
And 2020-123 is separated because of councillor Shoemaker's conflict. And so I have a motion moved by councillors Christian and Gardi, resolved that bylaw 2020-123 being a bylaw to authorize the execution of the contract between the city and Avery Construction Limited for the Northern Avenue Improvements, contract 2020-5D. Be passed in open council this eighth day of June 2020. Not open for voting.
All in favor? Carried.
And a motion by councillor Hollingsworth and Scott to this council now adjourn.
Thank you, council. Carried. We'll see you again soon.